Father, we again thank you today for your grace and mercy towards us as a nation. Lord, we ask you to bless once again this country, this county, Lord, that we reside in. Thank you for the moisture that you provided for us again. Lord, today as these commissioners meet, I thank you again for them being willing to serve this county. And, Lord, you give them wisdom and understanding as they go through their agenda, Lord, the decisions they make would be those, Lord, that would bless this county and the constituents there in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our 5:21 commissioner meeting. Do you have any additions or changes to the agenda?
So, we need to remove the vacancy update. Dan and Dan said that they did not need to be on the agenda after the agenda had been sent out. So, in place of that, attorney Soffin would like to add an executive session. And then, the endowment fund for the fairgrounds grantee is not back yet, so we need to take that off, but I would like to add a budget letter discussion. And please put that up, please. And then, under the consent agenda, Jim got me a board signature on County Road Fund Project Eligibility Certificate Form for Old Highway 85 asphalt removal and replacement with gravel to add to the consent.
Under old business, give the board an update of what I know from Frankie Thorne, which is why Dan and Dan did not come in today, so I'll give you an update on that and his number as well, in case you guys wanted to talk to him. Under new business, I got an email from on there. She wants to discuss the EMS. I told her we would add her in and it was up to the board. She would like to discuss sharing the cost of the ambulance service. Under new business. Is there anything else anyone you'd like to add or change to?
We'd like to add to old business, Commissioner Attentice's resolution.
So, update from Frank and Attentice's resolution. Anything else you'd like to add or change to the agenda?
I move to approve, agenda is amended.
And motion?
Second.
Have a motion been properly seconded? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to consent agenda, is there anything we need to pull or change, except you have the highway, the road, you just added it right? Anything?
I move to approve, consent agenda is amended.
Motion improperly seconded? Motion is improperly seconded, approved the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's start sending down the certificate form and the card. Do we have any public comment?
I do. Hi, I'm Ed Cionis, and I'm representing Osage Special District, I'm a vice chairman there. And it's, the question is actually legal. It's a resolution that was done back in 84, and it's in regards to running at large of dogs, and it's become an issue in our little town. And, all I want to ask is, there's a misunderstanding by the chair, and I have read it, I'm not an English major, nor am I a lawyer. So, here it says that the resolution declaring at, excuse me, 84-1, the resolution declares a running at large a dog in an unincorporated area within three miles of the city of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming. That's what's getting hung up by the chair, that it is, it's only for Newcastle, but that isn't the way I read it. Okay? Especially, unincorporated within three miles. What do you guys say about that? Because I would like to add this to our resolution of our town, because we do have a problem with vicious dogs. And according to state statute, I have to go in front of you guys, but you guys have already made the resolution, so therefore, I would like this to enact it for our town. Michael, do you have anything to say about it?
Yeah, and I just haven't had a chance to, I'm just looking at it now.
I understand, I understand.
I'd like a chance to review it, and maybe we can bring it back, put it back up to the agenda when I have a chance.
Everybody gets a chance to look at it.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
That would be fine. I just thought it could be something real quick, since it has already been established.
Alright, I would, I would feel better if the lawyer, the lawyer made that, but I'm sure everybody would like a chance to read it too, so if we can start it on old business.
That'd be fine. Thank you for the opportunity. And thank you, Becky, for your help on this.
Hi, Stan Juszczyk, taxpayer. I just wanted to, well, since the Wuhan virus struck four years ago, our national government has paid, has spent $2 trillion over what we take in from taxes, and we take in approximately $5 trillion. Part of this extra $2 trillion that we've added to our debt every year for the last four years has been ARPA money, America Rescue Protection Act money. That's money, fiat currency, that the Communist Biden regime printed up so they could send it out to every county in the country, so that elected officials could take it, right? And use it for whatever. And then there's the COVID money. Every economics person in this country will tell you that those are major factors driving up inflation, which we're all suffering from. Okay? Because, again, this money has nothing behind it. No gold, no silver, no taxes, it's just printed up and paid up to the country. So, why am I saying this? Because two weeks ago, I sat here, and if I'm wrong, you can correct me, the fairgrounds needed $8,000 in taxes to the IRS. What I saw was, this commission take $8,000 from ARPA money, which the federal government gave to them, and then took that ARPA money and paid the federal government their taxes. Does anybody see the absurdity of this? Because the money wasn't ever there anyway. This is, everybody was saying, this is the money that is enslaving the youth in this country. You took it from the federal government because you just couldn't resist it, and then you paid the federal government taxes with it. It's absurd. I don't know where your microeconomics comes from, but I don't understand why you're paying the government with money that the government gave you. It's absurd. And one other thing, so, so a person came up here, and, you know, they're, oh yeah, they're poverty, nonprofit organization that goes out to help people in poverty, right? But they're short of money because the grants aren't coming on time. So, they need some money upfront. There's nothing in the Constitution that I know that says you can take my money and pay this nonprofit organization that doesn't pay taxes, so they can have some money upfront till they get their money coming in. I know a lot of organizations in this state and in this county that when they need money, they have a fundraiser. You know, why didn't you tell that man, "Go out there, have a bake sale"? Because all he is, he's no more important than the cashier or the checkout boy, Deckers. He's a person that went to college for a social degree, and then has come out and says, "Okay, now I'm a nonprofit, I'm going to help the poverty-stricken, but first I got to go out and find them." That was his words. What we do is, we get the money, then we got to go out and find these people. If they're broke, I don't think you have to find them, they'll come to you. I'm just saying, every one of you could have took out your checkbooks and wrote that guy a check for the money he was looking for. All five of you could have kicked in a couple grand, I'm sure, but don't be filled with profits with my money, because I do that on my own. And don't tangle kids in the front, okay? Because that's getting old, aren't you? All the children, the children. We all love the children in this country, and we all fight for the children in this country, but I don't come here and ask you money to do it. Thank you.
Stan, I don't think we gave him any money when I was here. He put his presentation forward, and we listened to it just like we would have one, but no money was given to him and left board to correct me if I'm off, but we didn't give him money.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if he comes back, probably should have a paper or a raffle off a firearm, that makes a lot of money for people. All the other organizations do it.
Just wanted to clarify, we didn't give him any. And I have no idea what the needs are, especially in this presentation, but we didn't give him any.
Thank you.
Rare earth of the project. Welcome, Roger.
How you doing? Didn't make it first?
Well, yeah, you got very good.
But we got, between that storm and the rain that followed, we got 7.9 inches of rain, moisture, my house, and then this morning I checked, and we have another inch. Fortunately, at plant site, we put down a lot of gravel, which, believe me, out there, we were going to put more, because, so, I brought a few pictures, they're all very good quality, I don't know what happened, but the first one you'll see is a picture of the building with the steel up, and you'll see on that west end of that big building, we raised it about 10 feet. And that's because of our centrifuges and everything, they're so high, those towers. And, second building is just the rest of the tanks are in. The third picture, picture of the first skid that got in. And, that building extension, we have the siding on both sides, we have the insulation on the inside, we have the roof almost on now. And as I said, that first skid that you'll see a picture of, arrived about first of May. And then the ninth of May, we had, the governor came out for a tour, which he requested, which we're happy about, and he just had a handful of people with him. They had local press, they didn't bring the, Stan, or me, all of them was there, and that went very well. Our crusher that is going to go in that other building, that, you know, if you remember, I told you, we crush it and we bag it, actually put it in bags, it was so fine, went crushing it up so fine that we bag it, then we take it over, go through the process. Our crusher was supposed to arrive yesterday, it's hung up at the border in Canada, that anybody shipped anything out of Canada, that's probably doesn't surprise anyone, so, some paperwork, but they thought they were going to get it out of there late yesterday, we'll have it up here tonight, or in the morning. So, and we'll get that put together fairly quick, because it's, it comes, or any basements together. Our next skids will arrive as soon as we get a little further along, they're ready, they're all ready to go, they're ready to ship, we're just not bringing them yet. And, we want to get that first one in, we've got a lot of piping electrical to finish before we do. And, then we'll, we'll bring them in, and we'll get it up and stuff. We still, we're still looking at the end of July to start processing. End of July, first August, construction projects, I'm, I'm going to say, August-ish. So, but right now, it's still looking good. We, we hired a client manager for this plant, and his name is Tom Cannon, and he came, he was in Wyoming for a lot of years, in uranium projects out north of Douglas. So, that's about all I've got at the moment, and I think we'll start moving fast, it's that point where we start getting things in, putting it together, we'll go pretty quick, expect them very quick, so.
Any questions? Any questions for the board?
Just a comment, when I was there on the ninth, that is an impressive site, what they have already got done, and the future site, he showed me where that's going to be, and when it's the more permanent plant. They have all these, the tanks there for the processing is already there, a lot of the byproduct holding tanks and things like that, and the descriptions that they were giving during the video presentation, even some of the byproducts such as ammonium nitrate and stuff like that, those are materials that can be also used for other products, it's not just for this magnetic minerals and stuff like that, that's going to be coming out of there. And it was a very impressive tour, and I'm really excited for this county and for what that's going to be bringing for the county.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll hang around for a while.
Don't tell Stan how much money you've got for your project. Don't tell Stan how much money you've got for your project. I'm saying, don't tell Stan how much money we've been putting in into this project.
Forty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got another building that we've got a lot of things stored in, a lot of it's glass tubes or centrifuges, and they're about that big around there, and they'll go way taller, that's where that building is.
Yeah, that main building is going to be impressive.
Those, and they're made in Switzerland.
But they were cheap to get over here.
They're crated up and shipped over here. We went through the process about opening up all those crates and checking to make sure none of them broke, and they were. Obviously, those guys know what they're doing.
I think the glass, is it? I think it is.
The glass? It's probably.
38 inch or something?
Yeah, not quite a half inch there, but they break. I mean, some of them, almost, well, probably I think the longest is, it's less than 20 feet, but still, they're.
They're shipping them in tonne exits?
We ship them in wooden crates, and then they, they pack them with foam, and then they build structure inside to keep them from, they don't move at all, so.
Okay, we're going to move on and turn it over to Michael, you requested a executive session at 9:30, so I'm going to close out the Zoom meeting, you guys are welcome to stay until we get that. Thank you.
We'll be under 16,4405.
And it would have been interesting to see how many votes may have changed because of Gordon's actions, because of the response of their communities after those bills were passed, specifically the gun-free zone bill. I think that, I think that we would have very much seen a change in votes on that one. I think you would have seen more nay votes on that than you had before.
Are, so you're saying that, that some folks were counting on the governor veto in that one?
I very much 100% think that especially school districts, courthouses, places like that, were banking that the governor was going to go, "No way are we letting guns in these areas." And I think that their response afterwards may or may not have swayed some of those representatives and senators to vote a different way, because the response was strong.
I'd like to make a motion to have Kirk Cadlock contact LGLP and his pal, their availability to come do a workshop with supervisors and elected officials discussing proper supervisor etiquette and employer training.
Second, so a motion properly seconded, turning discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Is that open to the public?
Yep.
So, training?
Yeah. You'll have all the elected officials in the same room, so you better believe a little bit.
Um, what is it?
We don't know.
We don't know yet. I'm trying to figure that out. Okay. Because there's a situation also, and it will save that I.
Osage, where's Osage?
Thank you. Exactly the point.
So, as you can see by my email that I sent him out on budget training, so I would like to either have the chairman send out a letter, or I need to send out a letter to all department heads, when elected officials, that they need to redo their budget and cut it. You had already asked them to cut it by 5 to 10%. Some of them came back with it raised by 26%, some of them are asking for raises, some of them have already given raises to their employees now, oh yeah, big raises, because the budget hasn't been done. And, we have to cut, and so, it's best that a letter come from either the chairman or myself, or the entire board, saying you need to cut it, because I'm going to have to cut it before I even give you guys the proposed, and I'd rather they cut it than I have to cut it.
Any contact with Paul over there?
Yes, and he said that it's a wash, but even with it being a wash.
But meantime, in order to help with that, if we take the tribal funds and put them back into the general fund.
Those are normal compared to.
Yeah, but you're talking 700,000 though, so that clears up 700,000 of it.
But, the increase in the interest is pretty much almost a million dollars alone.
I know, but that's something we could do today, is move those funds back to the general fund. That moves 700,000. And, just direct Susie to keep a ledger on.
Well, I mean, that will be done, if that's what you're wanting to do, that will, we can, they're okay now in there right now, we don't have to do that right now, but if that's something that you're wanting me to do in the budget, I mean.
Well, it's 700,000, I mean, it's not all of it, it's a star. I mean, I know that that doesn't really affect a lot of it, but I think it's something we're going to have to do.
Because, like in my, my email that I sent you guys, for every dollar given as a raise, there's 25 cents in all the other funds that it's affected. And now we've got an employee who received a $4 raise, I think, and so that is playing havoc on the budget right now, and it's just unreal what they're asking.
Commissioner Todd, can I ask, how will that help us with all of that money? I'm trying, I think I understand, but.
For all grant funding, you have to keep it in your budget to be able to pay as the grant comes in, basically. So, we, we moved those funds into its own line item to just kind of keep track of them, which, I don't know why we did.
Okay, so see, those, those aren't grant funds anymore. Those we did as unused to be.
And we technically spent them.
And last year's budget, we took them into the general fund, but then it got to be where you guys were spending them, so we moved them back into the general fund for tracking purposes. But if, if we move those back into the general fund and just try to figure out, each, each time you guys want to spend them, you would have to do a budget adjustment, pulling them from the general fund, but I don't know if we can do that, because then we're pulling from the general fund into this fiscal year, and that would be the only way you could spend those, because they're not part of the general fund.
And that's where I was going, is I wasn't sure what, by adding it to the general, what are we gaining?
Because they're not part of your budget, so I don't know if you'd be able to spend them like you can right now, because.
Let me be clear, I'm not questioning, I'm just trying to understand what, what you might be wanting.
So, you'd be pulling every time you want to use them out of the general fund?
We already cut it, we already technically spent them. Trying to figure out what we could navigate around the stinking grant funds.
And, we were talking about this, so, the money from the solid waste, that's not going to come out in time, right? So, it's going to, that's going to hurt us, the money that is.
It's going to hurt us, it's just a pass through.
Oh, okay.
But, it has to be in our budget, because we have to show that we have the funds in there to. But it has to be in our budget, because we have to show that we have the funds in there to, to pay it, because they're all reversal by grants, and so it has to be in our budget.
Yeah, that, that, that won't affect the county's budget, it's just, it's in the county's budget for tracking purposes. There's a reason that's there.
But it is in there, and...
Yeah, it, it's in there, it shows, but it's, it's there for tracking. It shows in our budget, but it does affect what the county spends or what the county gives. Because that's on a, that's on a separate entity for that. So we took that trial money, we brought it in as revenue replacement. So...
But it's gotta be in the line item, because we have, of course, spending it now. It's part of our budget.
But if you...
Go ahead, no.
Does it really need to be in the line item, or are we just trying to keep an idea of what we're using of that? I mean...
No, it's gotta be in the line item, or you just can't spend it. If it's not in the line item, you can't spend it.
Even though we already technically said we, we used it?
Because if you put it in the general fund, you have to do a budget adjustment every single time. And that's what we were trying to eliminate by putting it back into the line item.
I understand that, but you're only talking if you use it for dispatch. I mean, that would be a pretty major...
But see, we already have budget for dispatch.
I know, trying to figure out.
I'm trying to, I, I don't, I would agree with you. So what, if we're, why does it have to be in the line item? Because that's for a specific thing, right? Whatever that line item is.
No, it's an artful line item.
Oh, okay, that's...
It's got its own line item, its own number.
Oh, you want to bring it into this year's budget, or the budget that starts January, or July one?
It's hard in this year's budget.
Okay, it's in there.
So it just rolls over to next year's?
And then July one of next year, could we take and do on next year's expenses, a line item for that amount to cover up? So one, so one transfer out of that, into that, into one, out of that pool of money there, one budget adjustment transfer into one line item that will take it all, because it's for revenue replacement. Then that would free up money out of the other ones to be spread out. That way you could do it in one budget transfer, one amendment. And then it gets...
No, because it's art, it would already be in there.
Yeah, but we're bringing it, you're gonna do it one, it's leave it where it is. In the next budget, bring it, bring it over. Knowing we're gonna be seven hundred thousand, we're supposed to go seven hundred thousand dollars in. Knowing we're gonna be seven hundred thousand dollars short in these other five. Bring it all into one account, which would free up money that you could put in these other five.
So just go into the budget with zero in the ones?
Well, not zero, but knowing you're gonna be seven hundred thousand short on these five. And this one here is flush. If we bring it in, that will free up money to go back to these other ones. Just in the, in the budgeting process. You know, you're not gonna have to do all these transfers, but it's knowing that you'll bring one lump of money in to bring that account flush, basically budget that account seven hundred thousand short to fund these other ones. And then do that budget adjustment in the new budget. That way you're doing one transfer, all into one account, knowing you intentionally shorted that account in the budgeting process, to free up that money for the other accounts. Then you do that one transfer after July first, to bring it into that account, that line item account.
And would that mean you only do one budget adjustment at that point?
Well, that's, we're trying to get us not doing all these budget adjustments. That'd be something to talk to Paul a little bit about. Knowingly, knowingly short one account that amount.
Just, go ahead. So say, and that's, I think Ed and I are kinda maybe on the same plane here. I'm getting confused though. So, my thought, what was, what did you have figured for dispatch? Say it's three hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, three hundred and four, I think, or less. It's way more this year.
So three hundred thousand, we know we're gonna have to pay that amount out. How do we... I guess I don't know.
I think I know what you're trying to say, I just don't know if that's, yeah, do that.
Isn't the dispatch gonna be a new line item? Are we gonna consider it in the same thing?
No, we already have that, it's already been budgeted, we've had it for a while now. Because we had to say it last year.
Can you pay, I, maybe I, I don't know the answer, maybe I'm wrong, but, or maybe you can't, but can you pay next year's dispatch fees this year? Out of this budget? Can you basically do like a sinking fund, like you've sunk that money for dispatch? Like it's gone, and that's all you can use it for?
I don't think so. We have a contract with the Joint Powers Board.
But if we put it in a sinking fund, which ties it up just for the, I mean, if... I understand that, we wouldn't, but if it's in a sinking fund, though, isn't there, there's...
We don't have sinking funds.
Yeah, we do.
Not, not that we couldn't carry over like that.
Wouldn't it be similar to like what we do with the grater, or we put mine aside, and then...
I thought that it's statute, said you could have a sinking fund. It's very similar with grater. It can't be touched or anything else, it's, it's technically spent. But maybe not, I don't know. Like I said, I started this, but I could be wrong.
The grater stuff is seen as...
Yeah.
And that's your tag, just a part of that, it can be really fun.
Well, what I'm saying is, is there's something we can do similar to that? Because I see what he's thinking through it, Commissioner Todd, I mean... It's something we can come across, Paul, and see what he says, but... Moving on from that, we have to do the letter.
I just need the letter, either the board sends it out, you guys sign it, or the chairman, or myself, or something.
Oh. I guess there's several things I'm thinking of, and... Because we really don't know, we haven't looked at it yet either. Do we give them the opportunity to come talk to us about it?
Well, I think we've, we gotta do that, we've already said...
Or do we just say, do we just say, you have to do this on your own?
They have to redo them first, and then we'll set up the meetings. Because I have to have my part done before we set up meetings. And I have to cut immediately, because what they submitted can't even come before you guys, because it's not...
My, my other question is, if there was a raise given, was that raise in the parameters of our salaries? Well, that's, should be a good no-no.
So, who was it?
On the chair.
But was it an incremental raise that, of a person that was already here? I don't know, but, um, we need to give them the opportunity to get aside.
Well, you said letter out, so then this, we need to cut this much. You can cut it voluntarily, or we will pick it apart as a board, we will pick it apart.
Well, and not all departments did that. There was only, uh, there was a lot of us, you know, that know how to keep within our budgets, but there were some that were just outrageous.
We send that letter out and give them the opportunity, and if they don't wanna comply with what we requested, then we as a board have that authority to start picking it apart.
Well, I'm sure you guys saw that list, it was pretty, I mean, the fair board, that's a hundred thousand above, or almost four hundred thousand for the library that requested. I mean, there's a lot there that took big jumps, but I don't...
Are we suggesting that they go back to last year's numbers, or what, what is our suggestion?
Well, at least back to last year. I mean, they're just, some of them, I mean, twenty-six percent on some of them, jumping. When you guys have already asked, but they're not being refused to.
I'm just wondering, uh, maybe if you got, get the department heads in here, just to give it, give them an opportunity to explain what, what is actually going on.
Well, not on purpose of the meeting.
And they can, but see, I have certain stuff that I have to get to the board, and it's, I have to cut. And so it'd be better to have you guys cut before I cut and give it to the board, because I have a process that I have to do, so, and I have to get that to the board before we meet with the department heads.
I'm, I just don't understand that. Why can't you have the meetings with the heads and, and department heads and elected officials, and maybe they can shed some light on some of this stuff?
Because I have to give my suggestions, because I have reports that I have to get to the board as well before they meet with you guys, because they have to finalize, and they can do that after. I have certain steps that I have to do as well, so...
I think what he's saying is, is that if they give us their opinions on what they can and can't cut, or at least suggestions, that it would give us better decision-making abilities when it comes to doing exactly what you're saying. But you have a deadline...
I'll just go ahead and do mine then, I guess, and you guys can then do yours, so...
I mean, we've already told them that they could come in and talk to us, so the invitation's been there, so, and we have the, they can come in already, so we just need to, you guys as a board just need to decide what, do you wanna do a group letter, you know, Becky do a letter, Cheryl do a letter? What, what would you guys like to do? Go ahead.
Well, I, I think it would be, um, make it easier for Becky, certainly for these people to have one more opportunity to go through their budget themselves and make some choices, because they should be the ones who know what they really need and what they don't need, but they're gonna have to take this seriously. There'll be a timeline, right, on when they have to get in. And, um, I, I think everybody knows, we've been saying this is coming. And that this isn't something new, it shouldn't be a surprise. So, I think, just to make Becky's job easier and to give them the opportunity to cut where they, they feel would be the best place to cut. Give them a few days to do that.
Yeah, and then I will have, why, to you guys, before we meet again, like the next meetings, we should be able to start doing department head meetings in the afternoon.
I, just an opinion, but I would, I mean, you kind of know what we're looking at, so if you give a letter and you just signed it as a commission, that would take away that, your concern.
Well, because I would like to get the letter done and sent out, so they're not gonna be able to sign it.
Well, they could.
We just put down the signature.
Yeah.
Chairman signature.
But that way, it's, you were concerned about that, we make sure that happens, so the board's all standing together on it, and we'll, that's my suggestion.
But we should be able to have, we can have it out, have their new one back to me, if they get ideas on, and then we can just start doing the next meeting.
So we just need to make a motion to do that, and then, yeah.
I move we approve our chairman's signature on a letter generated by our clerk for the budget cut letter sent out for our department heads. So the motion can be accepted. So, our motion's been properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion yes.
Okay, so we're liquor licenses. Amber, hi Amber.
Hello. So, this is the renewal. And we, last year had one available that nobody had, so it was just sitting out there. Um, so this year, Pam has, for Pizza Barn, has applied for that retail liquor license in order to be able to sell on premises and package off premises. She was not able to do that with her restaurant license. So she is applying for that retail liquor license and change from the restaurant. And then they have, so I have the one, two, three, four, that have always had their retail, and then the limited retail, the two for the limited. Other than that, everything works good.
So we have new, one new application?
Yep.
And three that we've always had?
Four.
Four, sorry.
And then two limited retails.
Which means we have a restaurant available?
Well, we have lots of restaurants, there's no limit on restaurants.
So this will just, we want, we don't want to have any retail liquor licenses?
Available, yeah.
Okay. Then the Pizza Barn will change from a restaurant to a retail?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody see good standing with me?
Yep.
So do you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
If most two approve the liquor license as presented to deputy... The thank you class?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the current liquor licenses, do we have a second one?
Second.
Our motion has been properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
That was painful.
Update on Newcastle BLM, that's Drew, and is she up there? Uh, maybe Commissioner Todd, do you have that update, or I'm not sure.
It'll go Drew.
Okay.
She has stuff, so what happened is, we've been quarantined.
Okay. We can, we can, the boards are capable, we'll jump onto old business and then we'll stop, if motion comes up. Update on the attendance resolution, so Friday, I got a call from Frank Ethan, who's head of the Republican Party. What he asked is, one, he said that he supported the resolution that we signed and was in favor of it. In fact, he thinks that this may be at least part of the solution to the rural areas being kind of squashed out by the more populated areas, by maybe not increasing the numbers of people, but by waiting the vote. Uh, he welcomed any of you guys to give him a call. What he said is, is that, you know, by statute, it's supposed to be an immediate vacancy, but one thing that he commended us on is not signing the letter and asked if we would wait until after November, and then he would bring all his resources to bear for the Republican Party to actually help push this, or at least figure out a way to get this pushed through, in, in order to get the support. So, on Monday, I had Dan and Dan come in. Uh, I got Chip Nyman on the speakerphone, and we called Frank. I told him that we did support the resolution, um, but we wanted to wait to sign it until after November, not ten years, is what Frank asked for. Um, so he said there's quite a bit of support that's been gaining on this, and his, like I said, his theory is this may resolve the, maybe a way to resolve the rural areas being squashed out of voting. He would like us to wait till after November, then sign it, because then a fifteen-day clock starts. And both Dan and Dan, with the support of him behind them, agreed to do that. That's where we're at right now. Um, but again, we welcome any calls from you guys if you had questions. Um, but that's what he asked of us. Chip recommended to them on speakerphone to do the same, and they were, frankly, they were happy because they didn't know Frank was behind them on this, and he said he absolutely was.
Just a quick clarification, this is for the, the resolution of declaring a vacancy, not Commissioner attendance.
Correct. Yours is up there. Um, so that's the update, go ahead, Commissioner Todd.
Geez, I'm my best thinking in the shower in the morning. I was thinking this morning, a faster way to do this would be for Mr. Nyman to relinquish his duties as our Weston County representative, and Mr. Alan Slagold to represent, to relinquish his duties as Nyberar and Goshen County representative. And then see what, how the chips fall. But the people who are in favor of this, put their money where their mouth is, and let the governor then decide what he's gonna do about it. And then, if he removes those people from office for not doing their jobs, their duties, then we have an absolute right to appoint for that position. But, you know, Chip may be in favor of this, but put your resignation on the table.
Well, I was, uh, an opinion on that, which I've already said, is Alan was... Well, I was, an opinion on that, which I've already said, is Allen was in favor of it too, which I think is interesting, but that, that was the request from Frank, and I just brought out, asked Dan and Dan, since we signed it, if they were okay with that, and they were. So, at least, until after November. Then after November, Frank said, "Sign away," because then that starts a 15-day clock, which would give him that ability to have more backing, he said. He doesn't want to go to a knife, or a, he wants to go to a knife, like he said, with a battleship, so that was how we felt about it. Go ahead.
It, it just seems that we're going to be in the exact same boat as we are now. You're going to have elected officials still representing the same designated boundaries. Until one of them steps up and declines to represent the county, that he is not a direct taxpayer in or, or resident of, I just don't know, I mean, I just, seems like we're fishing in muddy water.
And, and you could be right.
I, I like Commissioner Todd's idea, I mean, it's, let's have them declare their vacancies right now. Why, why wait till November and then this whole thing goes down and we're back in the same boat? And if it's such, if it's such a good deal, and everybody's so sure this is going to hap, you know, will happen.
Well, no, he didn't say he's sure, he just said he wanted to win it.
Let's get, let's get the fight on the table, if it's going to happen. You know, send a letter to Chip, ask him to re, you know, resign from being the Weston County one, send one to Allen to resign from the Niobrara and Goshen duties. Then there's, then there's definitely vacancies planned, then they have to do something.
I'd say that's ultimately up to the board on what we could want to do, that was his request, and that's why they were pretty anxious to move forward, after they realized that Frank was in their corner. By his, I don't know Frank, but by two phone calls, and he, he seemed to support it, and Chip backed him, so that's, that's the update. Commissioner, Board.
I would, I've been thinking about on the Commissioner attendance resolution that we didn't pass the voting on at the last meeting. I understand we don't necessarily currently have an attendance problem, but I do also believe in properly leading by example, and I think this is, this is something that we should again consider.
So by considering, you mean, I put it on the agenda then?
I would like to.
Board feel about this? No. Well, we did get, I think both Nathan and myself asked for it to be sent, that's an important part of it.
It's been sent, yes.
Okay.
That was mine, we get an answer from the Attorney General's office, and then if he says it's okay, it's okay, I mean.
I, I'm, we want to put it back on, Commissioner, Board, do you want to wait until the Attorney General findings come back?
I would like to.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll just move on from that, so we get that back. Thank you for that, and the update. You want to just go with Jeannie, or do you want to wait? New business, oh, moving forward with the EMS district, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment on this, I thought we were going to have a few free moments, so.
We can do the. Do you want to wait?
No, it's okay. I was just going to say, my sinking fund deal I read, it's only, appears to account for fair ground usage, so.
Okay.
I get what I.
So moving forward with the EMS district, Commissioner, right here, would you turn this on that, because you, you brought a motion, so.
Well, it's just, we have to, for moving forward with this, we have to get the boundaries to the assessor. We'll have to advertise it for, I have to pull that back up, for 60 days. We have to advertise it prior to it.
Any public comment?
Yep, two public comments. So we need to advertise all that as well?
There's, you know, I would, I would actually like to have Michael go through this, because it's reading the state, the statute, the bill, it's everything.
It's written 1812-105, right?
It's 10th of all 43.
Yeah, it's 1812-105B.
Do we know who's, want to participate?
Well, what, I, I think whoever's directed to be is countywide, for the county, you know, because that was kind of the idea. That's why you have the public comment, if certain districts, certain areas want to be out of it, then that's where they come forward in that public comment period.
Yeah, you have to have a proposed resolution designed, and then advertised for 60 days.
Unfortunately, no other county has done it, because I asked to see what their resolution looked like, so we'll be first.
This is going to be uncharted order for everyone.
Do you want me to make the run it?
I was going to ask. I'd be very comfortable, a lot more comfortable with you making the run, doing the resolution and interpreting all the laws, because there's, it can be formed under certain statutes.
Because I have a resolution of a different district, but with this new, new decision that was passed, this one's completely different.
Also, so we have to do the proposed boundaries and give it to the assessors, so they look for conflicts and stuff like that.
You also ask, who's revenue department?
Yeah.
And you say proposed boundaries, does that just mean the county lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I already talked to her about it, and it would just be from her county.
We'll give it a shot.
When would you be able to put something together, so that we have a, kind of build a timeline on this?
You can have, I can have something by the next meeting, what is that, the? Six? And wait, is that the wrong year?
That doesn't work there.
Twenty-three. That doesn't seem right.
June fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth. So we'll bring this back up under old business, June fourth, if that's all right with you. And we might go out, at least a draft of the resolution. So we'll just start there and put it back, have Michael get us the draft together on that, and then we can go over it. Do we need to do a motion for him to draft it, or are we good?
Okay.
Drew, are you on?
So go on to new business, send it in. So she can sit there, she's set for her. We'll let Pam, if you want to come up. As soon as she comes on, when I stop.
My desk, perfectly fine. So, last meeting, well, thank you for meeting with me, and so last, is that for you?
Yes, alright, so. Hi Drew. Can you hear us?
Yes, good morning Commissioners, I'm, I'm sorry to the Speaker that I just jumped on and interrupted your, your starting.
No, no, we were, we were waiting for you, so you, it's your slot, so take it away.
Thank you, I was having a few technical problems getting in, but I think I finally figured out how to access the website link, so. Good morning Commissioners, there is a lot going on, so let's start with the BLM, Newcastle, EIS. So we've had several meetings. This EIS is still pre-decisional and confidential, so we cannot talk about the details of the document. But what we can tell you is that Commissioner Todd has been at many of the meetings that we've had with the BLM in trying to work with them as cooperating agencies to negotiate some things that are going to affect Weston County. I will tell you that the process is that we've had several meetings, we did submit comments for Weston County, and I believe that the BLM now is working with the contractor to package that up, and it will go to DC headquarters. So, we are looking at maybe a draft EIS coming out in early fall, not sure if that's going to change a little or be delayed, but that's kind of where we're at with BLM. We can't really talk about the details, but I wanted to tell you that we have met, we are in the process of negotiating with them, and the draft will come out. Commissioner Todd, was there anything else that you wanted to add to the BLM update?
I don't think so, I, I guess, I don't feel anything real egregious is attempting to take place here in Weston County, there, there's some mid-level areas of concern, but I think with Drew and Jeannie and the other Commissioners and Counties, I think we're all trying to do the best we can for the citizens of Weston County.
I think that's fair, Commissioner, and I think one of the things that we're really in tune with is that the land ownership pattern in Crook, Weston, and Niobrara Counties is different than a lot of other areas in the state, meaning you have a lot of private surface and you have these small parcels of BLM. So, what we don't want to have happen is that these small parcels of BLM land would have restrictions or designations for our, for, for any resource values that would push impacts onto the adjacent surrounding private property owners. So we are very conscientious of that, BLM has heard us loud and clear, and so we're trying to do our best to protect impacts to adjacent landowners. But without any questions, I'll move on to the Black Hills. So, with the Black Hills, we are still, we still have not seen the notice of intent. We are still working with the Counties in South Dakota to get our spreadsheet kind of updated, and I think that that's probably in my court right now, which my bandwidth is, is pretty narrow, so we'll be getting that up to date. We have not received any notice of when the notice of intent is going to start. Meetings continue to take place, I'm sure you've heard about the announcement from Nyman Resources and the Sawmill laying off quite a few people, so that's been a big concern. I know Jeannie has been to some meetings over in the area addressing some of the resiliency stuff and some of the LIDAR, and I don't know, Jeannie, if you have any quick updates regarding some of the meetings that you've attended recently. You're on mute. You're still on mute, okay. All right, I don't think there's any major things going on right now, we are still working with Sean Cochran and the local office to, on how cooperating agency status is going to work, and whether or not we're going to be able to be included on the interdisciplinary team as we move into the NEVIS project. So, we're still working on that. No definitive answers yet, so not a lot on the Black Hills this month, are there any questions?
Go ahead. I was talking to a forester last week on our ranch, Drew, and some of the forestry work I do up there. Apparently, some of those bat stiffs are already taking effect on some of that federally tied money, so the, what's concerning to me is that could have a direct impact on our logging industry during the summertime now. I think it's May 1st, end of October, maybe, I mean, it, it, it's an absolute do not touch the forest ground, and that, that, it's worrying to me.
Commissioner, I think you're spot on. It is concerning, because the habitat protection measures that they're going to put on for the time of year, that's Black Hills, that we would be able to access the Black Hills, they are stipping a lot of those activities, so that you can't get in, that is a problem. Part of the reason that they're going to be so stringent as well is because the bat moved up into endangered category from threatened, so it's going to be even more strict as far as exceptions are concerned. So you're correct, we're just going to have to work with the local office and the Fish and Wildlife Service to try to maneuver some of those requirements, and, but they are, they are pretty stringent. So I'm going to move on to sagegrass real quickly. So we are in the draft EIS process. I am participating on sagegrass through the Wyoming County Commission Association with MICA, representing the 16 participating counties across the state, Weston County is one of those. We are working with the state leadership team very closely on reviewing the document, meeting with the BLM, trying to negotiate some of the new requirements in alternative five, which is the preferred alternative, as it pertains to consistency with the executive order, and as it contain, as it pertains to consistency with the adaptive management framework and the compensatory mitigation framework of the executive order. So we are working through that, comments are due on June 13th. I think the process is going to be this for you all. MICA will be putting together comments on a broader level for WCCA. I am working on a template that will include some of MICA's comments from WCCA, but then we're going to have some places, it will go to Weston County, and it'll say, "Weston County, plug in your local information from your county natural resource plans here," or, "For your socioeconomics, here." And then if you want to submit individual letters from Weston County, we can just use that template, and we can plug in that information, and you can submit by June 13th. I, I have a sense that you will say, "Yes, you want to submit, and will I help finish out that letter for you, so that you just can review it and sign it?" If I am wrong, let me know, but I will try to get something to you by your meeting on June 4th, so that you can review that and approve it at that meeting. Are there any questions on that process, and did I mistake maybe my assumptions of what you'd like for me to do?
No. That's not your idea.
Happy to help, so.
Thank you.
I do, I do think that we have, I do think that we've had a few wins in language. I do, I do think that we have, I do think that we've had a few wins in language with the BLM on some changes that we've wanted to see for consistency. So we are going back and forth, we meet with the BLM often, and the problem that we've had is this is really being pushed from headquarters and not the state BLM office or the local offices. So it's been kind of a challenge in how much we're willing, we're able to accomplish with the state office. But are there other questions regarding sagegrass?
Go ahead.
I just want one comment on that. Michael with, or MICA with WCCA, he is way above and beyond what expected of him with, on the federal level. He has been with NACO and back in Washington, fighting tooth and nail for this state. I mean, it's, we are very fortunate to have him and his knowledge on our side. Just wanna plug that in there, with him, he's been fighting.
Mark.
Thank you Commissioner Wagner, I'm gonna relay that to him. MICA and I are working very closely together on multiple issues for the Counties, and you're correct, he's doing a great job. He's only been in there about 14, 15 months now, and he's not nearly as jaded as I am, but he's more jaded than when he started, so he's doing great, he's right on track. I will, I will relay that to him as well. I do wanna make a special note to all of you, some other things that are going on, directly or indirectly. One, the Forest Service Old Growth EIS. So you did send in a letter requesting to be a cooperating agency. MICA has done a great job in working with NACO and the Forest Service to get us inserted into that process. The draft EIS is going to come out this summer. I fear that we got inserted to the process late, so the impact that we'll be able to have on the development of, on the alternatives, I think we're behind. But we were able at least to negotiate a seat at the table. I will say that we were very proud of Wyoming when the Governor's Office, Kate Barlow, had a meeting with the Forest Service, they had indicated that the majority of requests to be cooperating agencies came from the state of Wyoming and our Counties. So, well done. That was good for us, we've kind of been a leader on wanting to be at the table. Our first meeting is gonna be on Thursday at 10:30 to 12 o'clock, and so if you did not get that invite, please let me know, and I will forward it to you. I do plan to participate as well as MICA. So we'll probably get an update of where they're at in that process, what the timeline and the schedule is for the draft EIS, and then where we can participate moving forward. Any questions on Old Growth? Okay, the conservation and landscape rule, BLM's conservation and landscape rule. So the final rule was posted in the Federal Register. This is gonna get a little bit tricky, so the rule was posted in the Federal Register, it's not a good rule for us. It creates a new leasing program, instead of just conservation leasing, and the final rule, they broke it out into two different things. One, restoration leasing, and two, mitigation leasing. They're creating a leasing process much like we have with fluid minerals, where they're gonna be able, where certain entities are going to be able to lease for restoration or mitigation with BLM lands. This could be in direct conflict with mineral leasing, grazing in some areas, certain types of recreation. So we have been working with the Congressional delegation to do a Congressional Review Act challenge. Because the conservation rule has been posted in the Federal Register, but has not been received by Congress yet, Congress can't do anything on filing a CRA. So if you're wondering about that process, it's a little bit tricky. It has, they have to notify Congress before Congress can take any action on a challenge. So I wanted to let you know where that was. Longer that it's delayed, probably is better for us. The fluids mineral rule, final rule was out. This is gonna have a significant impact on small operators with increased bonding requirements, as well as other cost recovery requirements. This final rule was issued, Congress was notified, and Barrasso and Lummis have filed a Congressional Review Act challenge. And what that means is it will go through a certain process to where the next Congress then can take action on that challenge. It has to happen within a certain time period of when it's filed, and when Congress receives it. So that has happened, and both the Governor's Office and the Petroleum Association of Wyoming, along with others, have filed a lawsuit. So I wanted to let you know that. In addition, the CEQ has issued its Phase Two NEPA implementing rules. I have not read them yet. It does impact local government participation in the NEPA process, so once I get through that, I will let you know what the changes are, but right now, it's kind of down on my priority list until we get some of these other things knocked out. The last thing I just wanted to make you apprised of, and you might have heard, Buffalo BLM has issued the final EIS for the coal leasing document, and they have chosen the preferred alternative as no coal leasing. So that will eliminate coal leasing in the Powder River Basin. It is a big deal, it is a problem. Both Campbell County and Converse County have standing in that process, and we will be moving towards filing a protest. The Governor's Office is also heavily involved, but what will happen is, this will be a land allocation decision, so once the record of decision comes out, and it supports the no leasing alternative, there will be no new leasing of coal in the Powder River Basin until or unless that land allocation changes. So I wanted to let you know, that's a, that's a really big deal, it's a one more nail in the coffin with the administration, and goes right along with power plant close, or power plant rules that are negative against our power plants and other things coming out. So there's a whole host of things that when you weave them together, could have a fairly significant impact on Wyoming. The Governor's been very direct and very aggressive about how he's responding to these decisions. So with that Commissioners, that's all I have today, are there any questions?
I got one real quick Drew. Remember when last spring, when the Rocket, or the Rock Springs R and P come out, and all 23 county Commissioners drafted a letter to send in to the WCCA? That seemed to get some attention, do you think that'd be a good thing to do with the leasing, the coal leasing in the Powder Basin?
Um, let me run that by MICA. Let Commissioner Wagner, let me run that by MICA.
It seemed like that got a lot of attention, when all three, 23 counties in the state stood up, you know, for the Rock Springs area, you know. When we need help up here, they'll maybe help, you know, everybody'll band together to help us too, so.
Thank you for that recommendation, I will take that forward to MICA and see how he wants to approach that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Drew? Drew, as always, thank you for the update, we really appreciate it, and Jeannie, thank you, so.
Thanks everybody, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
So also on the side note, you know, thinking about it, all of us get involved with things, and some of us have, I mean, I believe everybody has their strengths, so I, I think, and I do, I do truly wanna say thank you to Commissioner Todd, you kept up with us, and kind of been at the forefront of it, and frankly, I need to educate myself more on it, but you have kept us up to date, it's kind of like, Ed, you have, with solid waste, we all have our strengths, and I don't, I wouldn't be keeping up with this as well if it hadn't been for you guys keeping in contact, so thank you. Back to you.
Okay, no problem. I was communicating while Drew was talking. Chris Belts, I forwarded you an email, he's more than happy to assist with anything he can with a resolution for an ambulance district, since people will be one of the first in Wyoming. He is with Campbell County Ambulance, and he has been working with the state in regards to ambulance districts, so I did forward you an email with his contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I was, last meeting, we talked a little bit, well, Consulman Owens was here, I talked about the hospital district, but in the meantime, I, I talked about the calls for service and how close they are to what's in the city limits and outside the city limits, and the ambulance covering a lot for Upton right now, as they're still working to have enough people there to cover an ambulance. So I talked about splitting the cost, not equally, or if equally, that would be great, but splitting the cost of, for the ambulance to be here. So I know we pay, the city pays $100,000, which will be 103 now with the 3% that they requested, and then, I believe you told, you guys said, 30?
30, I believe it is.
30 for the county. So I was wondering if we could take that, one, basically 135, and split it in half, or, you know, more, a little bit more on the city side, and then the county side, so maybe like 75, 60, or something to that factor? I know we're all in, having issues with budgets right now, cost has gone up for everybody. It would just kind of help out both us, the city, the county, and the ambulance, and since they're covering quite a bit, and a lot of the calls for service are pretty close to what the city is doing, I just thought it would not hurt to ask.
Any comments or thoughts on the board? Go ahead.
It is 30, isn't it Becky? Did we give?
Yes, and just so you guys know, Upton Ambulance is back up and running, and they are asking for funds this year, so we will be giving them more.
Which is what we used to give Campbell County.
So, we used to not give Campbell County a charge, and we took what we used to give Upton, and gave it all to Campbell County, and now Upton is asking for the same amount that we give to Campbell County, so they'll be giving, if they're giving, 80, 30,000, along with us giving Campbell County 30,000, so that will cut into the budget. So we'll be giving Upton as many help as possible.
Will they be consistent?
Well, they have a lot of EMTs, so the town levels paying for their EMTs, so.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead then. Yes, I guess from my perspective, just allocating additional 70,000 or roughly whatever right now would be nearly impossible, but I think after, as we work through the budget process, we look at it, but I also think they've given us district time to potentially see what we can create there is, it's my two cents.
I'm just, Becky, no 1%, we give our private services, do we have much cushion in that one?
No, 'cause there's several that haven't ever asked before, that are asking, because you guys told Wyoming to ask Upton Ambulance, and then just a couple others that they haven't asked for, but.
That is something that, until we see where the EMS district is going, I feel, you know, personally, we should probably try to help as much as we can, where we can. So that's something you draw to incidentally in our budget, is if we can allow the district to help them out, subsidize them.
As far as the ambulance service, obviously, it's a need in the county, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to helping where we can, kind of what Commissioner Wagner said. Our budget is, which I expressed, this is, it's about as thin as it gets, at least right now, and this is also really an experiment over here for our dispatch, which I'm not properly, none of us know where that's gonna fall, whether it's gonna be more or less, so I know that budget projections are trying to make sure that we have enough of that as well, and I think that at least a year, and then Commissioner Wagner's motion to start an EMS district, I mean, I think we're in the process of trying to help where we can. I just, I don't, I don't know where we're gonna get the money to do, and I wasn't aware of Upton, so that's another, that's another rock on the scale. That's my opinion.
Do you know if, if Upton is up and running full force, how much that's gonna take off of the Campbell County people?
It should help them, because they're, they've got quite a few EMTs now, I read in that paper, and the town of Upton is paying for people to take the EMT licenses.
Okay, but, and do you have, do you have how many EMTs have gone from Upton?
I think I had it the last time I was here, it went with me, but I know that when I talked to the ambulance service and I got the numbers, they were almost like 99% covering Upton.
So that'll take a little bit of pressure off.
Here's, here's his April Newcastle, they're on Intervention. City of Newcastle 25, Weston County 9, South Dakota 2. So Upton, I assume, is in the Weston County deal. So there's a pretty big discrepancy there.
I brought in, when I came in the last meeting, I don't know if it's in your minutes or not, I brought in the year of 2023, and then I brought in from year to date, when I was in last time.
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't believe any of the board saying that we want to help where we can, I think we're just kind of at a pause of what we've gotta fill in here, I mean, looking at, it may not be able to be 30,000 a piece for both, both of those agencies, we just don't know. You know, it's estimated, it's 400,000 dispatch, I believe.
Is there any remarks, or do they expect?
Well, it is, and, you know, that's, that's the rock, you know, the rock we chose, but I also believe that, that, you know, our services will be top notch too. So it's a pleasure to work with this one.
Appreciate the mayor coming in and discussing with us, and I think as we move forward with our budget, we can consider it. You know, that's all we, we, let somebody feels like we have the, where without it, do it today, which I feel we're uncomfortable with.
So I think if we just keep our communication open with you, the city council and yourself, and as we're going through the budget process, we'll definitely consider it. At least you know where we stand as far as, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be some of the things that you guys are ready to do as well, so.
It'll be nice to, it's nice to have you guys on.
Thanks for coming in.
Alright, thank you, you guys have a great day.
Service warrant, voucher, and future services warrant discussion.
Okay, so the county attorney has to show other agencies a warrant, but they have to pay for them in advance before the warrants can be served. So I have one that needs to be approved for you guys now, and I would like for you to do a motion allowing us to pay these anytime they come available, like when the judge approves them and has, have the attorney's office pay them, because they can't be waited on until another meeting. So if you guys can go ahead and allow us to pay this as the attorney's office raises them to us, so that we're not having to wait two weeks for a warrant to be issued by another agency.
So, do you want a blanket free approval for all warrants to be served on prepaid basis?
Yes.
To the county attorney's office?
Yes. Yes.
Not just warrants, summonses, anything that requires service.
Summons and warrants.
Yeah.
To other states.
To other states.
Yeah, to other states.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes to other counties as well. It doesn't have to do a prepaid to other counties, so.
Basically, you want a blanket prepaid for all summons and warrants issued out of Weston County?
Yeah. Yeah, it's for civil process paperwork to be served to a defendant.
You got all that information?
Sure, I'll go to the table.
But I want to see.
Yeah.
Have we ever denied any payment in the past?
Well, because of the lawsuit, we can no longer do prepaid. So, I need an approval for anything that comes before us, to be able to pay these.
Just out of curiosity, is that the average cost for a warrant, or what?
50 dollars.
50 bucks is about, yeah. Some, some, we have to go to a bigger city, sometimes it's more, but generally, it's 50 bucks. So, I'd ask, if I could, just that'd be general civil process, service.
Does, do we have money in the budget for this?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I just, I just want the, the motion to be ordered correctly for everything that's needed.
Ed moves to allow, or Commissioner Wagner moves to allow the court office to pay all civil processes as they are requested by the county attorney. As they are requested.
There you go.
We can't do prepaid, but we want to do prepaid.
Well, I just need the approval prior.
Apprehended.
Yeah.
So, are you the critic, you second on after hearing that?
I have a motion to properly second it for a blanket approval on warrants and summaries. Is that okay?
No, but that's, Ed, Commissioner Wagner moves to allow the court office to pay all civil processes as they are requested by the attorney's office.
Okay. That gets covered.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, and then Attorney Stolpan brought this credit card preauthorization request. Either wait till the next meeting, or, I don't know.
Says pink Ferrari.
We'll make it for Tuesday, I'm a fine woman, too.
Are you looking at eight people to claim criminal?
And business cards for our victims' services.
Part of that's reimbursable, isn't it?
Yes, the victim's service line is for, we need, law enforcement is out of their cards that they give victims, and now that we have victim witness, those cards are going to have a QR code that goes to our website. So, that's one of them, and we got to get it in before, we don't have time to pay for it. And then, the other one is the Wyoming Criminal Traffic Loss Books that the attorneys need after the 2024.
You have a motion to approve the prepaid.
Turn it up. I have a motion to second for prepaid, for this credit or authorization.
It's just.
Yeah, preauthorization.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion to properly second it, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you, see you guys.
Bye. No, I'll, you know.
All right, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? All right, commissioners, comments?
The BLM has rescinded their fire restriction, so you may burn as needed.
Commissioner, give it.
I just want to congratulate all our seniors this year at Newcastle High School, and wish them the best of luck.
Yeah, I'm off with the WCCA board meeting. Remember, a couple years ago, the WCCA tried to get it started where the WCCA would help the counties administering our workers' comp stuff. Basically, like for Jimmy out at the road bridge, they could provide training, you know, monthly training that they need to go online and do. Basically, what it would do is bring the workers' comp rate that every county pays down, down on a premium, because it's going to be, it could be a state pool. That's something they're going to try to make the run at again, I think. Last time, we needed Sweetwater in, we needed the numbers, and Sweetwater didn't want to go in on it. Weston County went, agreed to go in on it, moved forward with it. And that's something I think we could also work into some of the training for our other official stuff that WCCA can basically be the clearinghouse for us, sending out, hey, this is what your employees are required to train this month when they're given a chance, log on the computer, get it done, which will help our workers' comp rates immensely. That was one of the things they discussed. The other thing is the county dues to the WCCA. Overall, the assessment, the WCCA assessed out the county, the dues stayed the same. Ours went up $377, just because of the formula, the magic formula, how they break things down. So, ours went up a little bit, but overall, the state, the WCCA dues stayed the same. On that. That all I got.
Thank you, sir.
A couple weeks later on it, but want to compliment our school districts for coming together and putting on the mock crash scene. Out at the school, they had all law enforcement agencies, and the Flight For Life was there. It was an interesting, first time I've been to it. They had a lot of props being taken on what it's like to go into a collision and strap them into this machine, it's almost like a carnival ride, and it comes to a dead stop. And it was, they had the, some of the students were the actors in the crash scene, so they had it all propped up, fake blood, and they tried to make it as, as real as they could, and I thought it was pretty good. But, just looking at how all of this came together with traffic control and everything that was happening that day, and when the chopper came in, and there was a lot of things that, that came to a head, it was kind of cold, and, and how, how successful it was was pretty amazing. It's the first time I've been.
They need to let the public know, because we didn't know, and sirens were going crazy.
Yeah.
And they said there was a crash, that was final one.
Were you listening to the radios?
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were worried.
Right.
So.
Maybe on that side, some improvement, but, but on what we saw and what we got to take in, and it was, it was pretty awesome, really, on, on all the entities that had to come together. That's, that's a lot to plan.
They should let the public know, because they said there was about a crash on the overpass, because people were looking, trying to make sure they were okay, and.
Right. It's like, well, and people driving by, they saw the Flight For Life landing at the school, you know, they were nervous.
I probably would have been freaking, because I was like.
That shouldn't be funny, but to me, that's funny.
Yeah, they did a real good job with it.
I've seen several of those, and if that reaches one kid, it is worth it.
My, thank you, I want to give a shout out to, Walter and I got to attend the Episcopal Church last Thursday, it was recognized by the Historical Society there. And I had never been into that church, but it, it was the first church that was built in Newcastle. And the, I mean, it's a very little church, but I was amazed that, if anyone gets the chance or hasn't been in there, the stained glass windows in that place are absolutely amazing. I want to thank Mike Jordan for inviting me. The story behind that is they pulled the cornerstone of the church where they had a copper box. They didn't do it while I was there, but they pulled it, and they, there were several items in it that were just perfectly preserved.
No water had got, no water had gotten in.
They actually had to, they welded the box shut, and they had to cut it open. But, what did they have, they had a paper in there, what was it?
Two of them, one of them was when it was still the News Castle Journal, instead of the Newsletter Journal, and I need to still look that up in our archives and see if we actually got the.
What was the date? I don't remember.
I don't remember right off the bat.
But, this paper was yellow, but it was almost perfect, and the thin paper was in there. They just, the, the membership in there has done an incredible job keeping that church the way it is. I've never, looking at it from the outside, you wouldn't even know if stained glass windows are in there, but I appreciate being able to go and being part of that. So, thanks to Mike Jordan and the Episcopal Church for having, having me.
Yeah, those documents were well over 100 years old, and, other than yellowing, you couldn't tell.
Yeah, it was neat, and supposedly, the church over in Sundance is an identical to that, and they have also had a copper box that, I guess it didn't stay as preserved.
It caught water in it.
Yeah, it just never changed, and like it, so, thank you.
That was a beautiful thing.
As a welder, I'd like to know, with that technology, how did they weld it?
Who knows? The thing looked rugged and ancient, really. The box looked like it was, probably.
Yeah, and it was, it was, it did, no water, I don't know how they did it, so no water got.
No water got into it. The thing looked rugged as could be, the box, but it did the job.
They replaced that box with another one, with various items from recently, and put it back behind the cornerstone of the church for the next, you know, 100 years, I guess, is, we'll have that in there, but it was very interesting. Anything else, first board? Thank you, board, for today's meeting.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.